They canceled. They're not even, they're the way they are. They canceled up.
We're good to go? Yes, nine o'clock? Good morning. It's nine o'clock, October twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, and our initial Commissioners' Court budget hearing is now in session. And this will be a public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget for our county in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code, Section one-one-one point zero-zero-seven. A second budget hearing is scheduled for September the twelfth. And so this will be our initial hearing and department heads. Of course, the public will have a chance to, you know, speak for themselves on what they think of our budget. And any department head that have seen the proposed budget and would like the court to consider some changes to their budgets will also be taken into account. And then on the subsequent budget hearing, the court, which will be held during Commissioners' Court, the court will make a final decision on any proposed changes to the budget. We'll start with our invocation. Au revoir, roll call. Our county clerk has made sure we have a verified meeting. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Resno.
President.
Commissioner Mendoza.
President.
Commissioner Isondo.
President.
Commissioner Solis.
President.
And Commissioner DeCasa.
President.
Have a good one.
We'll have our invocation for Dr. Roger Litter from Kingway Church.
Good morning.
And Commissioners' Court chaplain also.
Yes, good morning. I missed my note on the dress code today. I'm sorry about that. Let's pray. Our Father, who provides rest, we come into your presence this day with the desire and the need to quiet our hearts and our minds and reorient ourselves toward you as we prepare for the work before this court. So grant us, Father, the ability to turn down the volume of the distractions of the immediate so that we may see the future. Open our hearts and our minds so that we may hear you today. May your guidance speak today to our leaders as you have spoken in the past. May our leaders be receptive to your voice this day as they seek to serve the community in the difficult decisions that they must make today, which prepares for our future. May wisdom be granted to them. May patience be theirs in abundance and may peace come from their efforts to honor you. And we thank you for your hand, which both leads and protects. In the Christ's name, we humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, as I was mentioning, this public hearing will be the initial hearing. I think I can open up for the public. Does anyone in the public want to address the court at this time? I just, on the proposed budget, I think overall things are getting better in our community, in our county. Revenues, we have an increase in taxable values of over, a little over a hundred million dollars, which is substantial given our history, our previous history, the last maybe ten, twelve years, when every year it seemed that values were dropping and we had to make tough decisions, budget cuts. So I think we are upping the corner. We had, mostly the increase was in our mineral values. We also had an increase in our real property values, which is, you know, given the price of homes and the price of construction, appraisals on real property tend to go up year after year. The state, during their last session, did place revenue caps on all counties, cities, municipalities, any taxing entities. So we are limited as to how much we can raise taxes from the current year to the proposed year. And in our case, that came into play. Smaller counties such as ours that are under populations of thirty thousand, the state allows us to increase our current levy up to half a million dollar increase. And what we did, what I did in the proposed budget is to come under that half a million dollar cap and not be in danger of calling for an automatic election. So some of the tax laws have changed in recent years during that last session. So now anytime you go up over their cap, it's not any longer that you have to wait for a citizen or an entity to call for a special rollback election. Now it's an auto, it triggers an automatic election. So we have to be careful as to how much revenue we raise from one year to the next. And our MNO, which is our general fund and our road and bridge, we do, we are combined under the half a million dollar cap comfortably. But it has resulted, I think, good for our taxpayers in a three cent decrease, a little over three cent decrease in our property rate, tax rate, which is, I think, will be welcomed by the folks in our community. And we're still able to raise enough revenue to maintain the increasing costs of providing the services for our community. Basically, in this year's proposed taxes, as far as salaries, they are stable. There are no reductions in salaries. There was one additional position in the general fund that I am proposing, and that is in the library. Ms. Navarro, over the years, we have trouble with the state of preservation process because of the, I guess, what they figure is a low commitment from the county as far as funding to the public library. And then, of course, she sees a lot of traffic in her library. And I went ahead and included a starting position there, a clerk for her department. And we also have one part-time position at our food pantry. And that's the extent of any new positions. Salaries, I'd say they're stable. Because of our situation, even though we had an increase in revenue, we have a pretty substantial budget deficit, which is how much we spend as to what comes in in our revenues. This year, we have approximately a one-point-five million dollar deficit. Even with our increased spending and, because our budget did grow up somewhat, mainly due to insurance and fuel and those to that effect, we're still, I was able to reduce our budget deficit, which is revenue. These are balanced budgets that I'm proposing, but we're balancing it with our savings accounts, with our fund balance. I'd like to get to a point where we could each year have our reserves set aside and be able to function as an entity with whatever comes in, that is what we spend. So we're not there yet, but we, I reduced it about half a million dollars. So our current deficit in this proposed budget would be closer to a million dollars than the one-point-five, which is rather concerning. It's too high for us to continue in that direction. So I was, given that, you know, I was hoping that we were able, I know last year we were able to have a cost of living adjustment to all the employees in our county. And some received additional salary adjustments other than the cost of living adjustment. This year, I'm not proposing any salary increases to any employees because of our deficit that we have. And I think as years go by, I think next year, I think we'll be in a much better position to address our employees. And certainly, it is concerning that, you know, cost of inflation, the cost of living keeps going up. And I wasn't able to include a cost of living adjustment. I just feel that it's, I wouldn't be physically responsible if I don't continue to try to address our budget deficit. So we are down to almost a little over a million dollars from one-point-six, which is a substantial drop. I think elected officials, we are all going back to where historically we have been with our salaries. All the officials that were notified of the, both in the proposed budget, what their salaries would be. The only exception is the sheriff. The sheriff, as you have seen, many have seen in the paper, and I've gotten quite a few calls on the proposed increase to the sheriff's salary to sixty thousand dollars. Basically, the sheriff had a salary of fifty-four-five this year with a car allowance of ten thousand five hundred dollars in addition. So basically, he had a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars. I met with the sheriff earlier, and I said in the audience this year during the budget hearings, and told him that it was my intention to remove the car allowances to avoid any perceptions or conflicts with him having a car allowance and using county vehicles, which is not allowable. And so I removed the car allowance and gave him a salary of sixty thousand dollars, which I think in the end will avoid any conflicts moving forward. I did have a problem with, you know, from time to time, the sheriff would drive county vehicles. And certainly, if you're driving, if you're having a car allowance, you need to drive your car. So to avoid any confusion and conflict here, we had that discussion. Because I see that, and well, I'll give you a chance to respond, but that is the only salary increase that I am proposing. But basically, it's just to avoid any further conflicts with how the county monies are spent. Road and Bridge, I did have some changes, I'm proposing some changes to Road and Bridge. And I met with the commissioners on this. I think we have a hybrid system, currently have a hybrid system where the commissioners have, there are crews or crew leaders. And then we had a project crew within that system that depending on what projects were ongoing, they would, you know, tend to those projects. Many of those employees were long-tenured employees. They have since, are resigning or have resigned. And I decided to eliminate that project crew and distribute the remaining positions to the commissioners for them to have under their purview. So basically, their crews went from a six-man crew to an eight-man crew. We will have a clerk, an assistant at the shop, to, for P Ls to answer the phones. And I, and this will come up, I did not include a, during discussions last few weeks, it came apparent that there is a need for an additional dozer operator. And that will be part of the request that will be oncoming. But for the most part, the Road and Bridge, we were able to increase discretionary funds to the, all the elected officials, the commissioners, to basically doubling up so they'll be able to do more work in the precincts. Their fuel was increased, so overall, it's an increase for the commissioners to be able to service their respective precincts. I N S, our loans, we have substantial debt service that we have to make on a yearly basis. With the increase in values, we were able to, of course, be able to service the entire debt. And I was able to include a loan that the sewer department is paying on their own, which is substantial, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And that, with that, bringing that back to the I N S debt service, it allows the sewer department and the water department to have more available funds. I know we've got a lot of, basically, services on our lift stations that pumps heat pumps. So it gives them a little leeway to better work his, his department and not be really tied. Other than that, I think the budget is good. Things are looking better. Taxpayers should be happy. We're getting a reduction in our tax rate departments. Like I said, everything is staying the same. We are, we had increases in our, of course, our insurances keep going up. That is taken care of. Your participation will remain at five percent. The county will be still paying the ninety-five percent of the premium. The, I'm thinking, there was an increase for most departments in their line items, especially for fuel and the physical jails, of course, for supplies and meals. So other than that, I think it's basically in line with what we're doing currently, except we may have a little bit more money in our supplies as per money. I did increase, going back travel. We were very limited in our travel budgets, the entire county. I did double most travel budgets from fifteen hundred to three thousand. If you were at two thousand, we went up to four thousand to better allow, you know, to attend conventions and educational conferences. So that will, there is an increase in there. And other than that, I'm open for comments, commissioners and department heads that wish to, you know.
Should we start with the commissioners first?
Yes, yes.
I just, my only request, Judge, on this one is, Commissioner, would it be if the court would consider increasing two of my line items on the swimming pool just because of the increase in cost of supplies for maintenance?
Okay, what page is that?
It's up page thirty-five. So currently, under supplies, I have five thousand dollars. We went way over that this year. And we're not even done with the year yet. So I'm requesting to maybe increase that by another two thousand dollars. So from five thousand to seven thousand. And on the equipment maintenance, from two thousand to four thousand. And again, that's just because of the increase in cost of all supplies. We have such a hard time of finding chlorine and all the other chemicals that we need to, of course, we're not able to drain the pool, so we have to maintain it year-round. So it is a cost.
Certainly, yeah, that's not unreasonable, that request.
Also, just on page forty-two. So on page forty-two, which is a special order grid, I guess it's the page where we would add that dozer operator position?
Yes. Forty-two.
And I think currently got position, Andy, is that what salary?
Road and Bridge is, he's currently at a salary of, well, the total addition including benefits would be forty-five thousand, six-sixty-three. So in addition to the twenty-eight, we would be adding forty-five thousand, six-sixty-three. And then we would be adding, on the fuel, which was zero, we'll be adding, proposing to add fifteen thousand for the dozer to have fuel. So that was, yes, after that meeting, we, it was important to have that position back there.
And I think Mr. Ramirez, the vehicle he uses, it is equipped with a fuel tank.
Yes.
When he's able, when he's traveling, he's able to fuel.
I think it's been ready to go right now.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, Judge, as we move over the swimming pool also, I know that we went over, I don't know what we do. I know that I have to close it a little bit early, because the same reason, I haven't had enough money for the chlorine. So we kind of like closed it, well, not a lot early, but a bit earlier. And it does need a pump that is like a central. So maybe just add.
What page is that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? My car is eight thousand and supplies?
Yeah, it's basically the same budget that you currently have. So you need supplies to increase that to what, Commissioner?
How much?
Well, I guess one thousand more.
On the double it? Two thousand dollars?
Two thousand.
A thousand dollar more and maintenance, you said you need a pump for fifteen hundred?
Yes, we need a pump for fifteen hundred.
So that would then go from one thousand to twenty-five hundred.
And I know that, on that road, Judge, is what, thirty, forty, thirty-nine, or what is it, Aguilaris Road? I get a lot of calls that it's really bad. I know we all have had less rain, but this last time that it rained, we had like two gauges and I think like a pipe truck, what do you call it, those big trucks, they got stuck here. And they've been asking for Caliche to fix the road. Maybe not this, I think it's like nine miles of road, Caliche Road. At least just to patch up the areas that are pretty bad.
I did increase everybody's budget by twenty-five thousand up to fifty thousand. I know that that will probably eat up the entire budget for next year. You know, the Road and Bridge Fund is very limited as to having any fund balance, to adding additional expenses. I think after this year, there should be some room. I'm proposing that moving forward, we may have an additional three-hundred thousand dollars in fund balance from what we have today, which is almost nonexistent. So, I mean, we could possibly add that as a, as an expenditure, special expenditure for the Road and Bridge for your precinct this year. I think, depending on how many estimates you think, I would think it's going to take that at least from twenty-five to fifty-dollar operating fee to make any significant impact on that road.
Because it's kind of like box stain, Judge, it's like pretty bad. It's going to need a lot of filter and.
So, Commissioner, I mean, there may be some room in our fund balance there. It's pretty tight, so we can overspend what's coming in. But I think we may have some room to add an additional fifty thousand dollars to, for thirty, what is, no, it's Aguilaris Road. What is the name of, Aguilaris Road? Aguilaris Road. We can add that on, during the Road and Bridge for consideration.
Would that go in her budget?
Yes.
On her budget?
So her Road and Bridge budget would go from fifty to a hundred. Or do we just limit that a separate line item so the court can see the expenditures of what is being spent on that? Or maybe twenty thousand? I mean, we can start with something, see if they can address a small.
I was going to request Judge for the golf course, a separate line item so we can get all the expenditures, you know, so it won't go to my, it won't go to my precinct, just stick to the golf course. We do need my golf balls, you know, et cetera, fuel. So I was, you know, I was going to request that for golf course.
And I know that road, Judge, has been miked up for years, so it hasn't had any kind of maintenance.
It's overwhelming. That road is long and it's a lot of.
Could we add a line item on our department and just maybe label it Caliche? And then you said at the discretion of the court, or?
Yeah, I mean, if you're going our general fund, and these are Road and Bridge expenses, it should be Road and Bridge expenses. As far as the road, the golf course, of course, is your fund.
Yeah, okay, so you mentioned it was probably three hundred dollars there, some cushion money there?
Yes, at the end of this budget year. Well, that's, I mean, that's a very different thing, yeah.
And before I make any improvements, we'll bring in the invoices, the bids, and we'll just talk about it before we do it.
I don't have a problem to add those fifty thousand additional for those road returns. I don't know about the other commissioners.
I guess it would be a separate line item, Melian Roxy, to her Road and Bridge department.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, for, it would be a, I guess, dedicated fund for Aguilaris Road, road improvement.
Commissioner, do you have any idea on how much you would want for the golf course as far as the budget?
We can go with the minimum, try it out year one, you know, to see how it goes. But I know we do need roughly about three thousand on golf balls, meaning range balls, you know, on a yearly basis, plus fuel. So we can go with the minimum. We can do about twenty thousand, see how that goes. And we'll play, we'll play by it.
So I guess that only would add it to non-department?
I, you know, I spoke with the commissioner on that, because he had made that request during the budget hearings. And I told him that we had, I had proposed a hundred and fifty thousand in non-department. And those monies, I mean, if they're available as soon as the budget hears.
This year, there was a lot of confusion, you know, there's no money, there's not.
No, it goes quick, because that is used, that is a catch-all for.
That's the problem, you know, the golf course will be left without money, you know.
So Judge, when you have a little bit of wiggle room here, I noticed you did increase the food pantry line item from sixty thousand to twenty-five.
Yes, those monies, we allocated sixty thousand, you know, and they were not utilized. So I went through the budget analysis and those line items that were not being utilized, yeah, I dropped them to see exactly how much we're spending. Certainly, the food pantry is very important to our community. And certainly, as any requests that come in, there's monies available to them. So they have, you know, access to our non-department line items. But yes, I did reduce that one because it was not utilized. I think, I'm thinking that sixty thousand was for a lot of the renovations that were made this year. And certainly, since the construction has been completed, maybe they are not requiring the entire amount. So I am proposing, like I mentioned in the food pantry, a part-timer that helps.
Correct.
Yes, that, I think that sixty was mainly for some of the construction.
Some of the repair stands.
Yeah.
I guess, like, what was it? You know, there's a little bit of additional money there. So, Commissioner, do you want to make the request and add those twenty thousand dollars, that additional I have?
Yeah, that is my request that I'll be making.
Okay, so the golf course. Twenty thousand.
I guess repairs and maintenance, or?
Correct.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, I'm okay.
So we're adding that if it's going to be a ten dollar, then I'll position two. If that's the proposed, got a position to precinct to replace the transfer of, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, and Apollonia, are we leaving in the same?
Well, that's a request.
Judge, can I have another request? I'm going to bump Mr. Elsantos.
Yes, that's on there. Okay, I saw that where.
It will not affect the overall budget.
It's just a slot change.
Yeah.
And that is, that's a good concern in the proposed.
And Apollonia would be like a what salary? What's the salary?
Right now, he's at ten dollars, but he is a C D L driver. So I don't know if you would want to.
C D L drivers are started thirteen?
They're at fourteen.
Fourteen fifty-seven, I think it is.
Fourteen fifty-three. So, I mean, that's what they're at.
Does anyone else need a C D L driver?
I think we're all doing, I think we're all doing.
No, just get a.
What?
I think Priscilla wants that program.
Apollonia.
Yeah, Priscilla wants a C D L driver.
Yeah, we need a C D L driver.
Porque Apollonia is a C D L driver.
And who's crew right now?
Mike.
Okay.
I mean, not that I want to not have him there, but we all need somebody there instead of getting two fourteen-dollar salaries here and there. So we can just mark it.
And who has Mr. Ramirez right now?
Mr. Ramirez went to the, what's it called?
Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge.
Right, right, so you had a, you had a, okay. So we're basically creating one position, one separate position.
Because I have one and those are, so I have one already, so. Do you want to, or I can just increase it? I mean, I might have you to C D L driver?
Y'all can make the preference during the year. Those positions are there, so.
Okay, so we'll just increase it.
So we're increasing?
Apollonia.
I don't know what slot he is for.
He's on slot, um, four.
So slot four, we'll have an increase in salary to fourteen fifty-seven because of his C D L driver license. Did you, is he a new employee? Did you just come on, or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, because we've been adjusting C D L drivers for us every year. They're hard to find, so.
Commissioner Mendoza, you're not asking for Caliche on your position? You have a lot of culture, Rob?
Yeah.
I think I have the most of each road.
Exactly. You're not saying anything?
Well, I do, I have several of each roads, and I just have one.
Maybe we can do one at a time one year, Commissioner? But we don't have, there's not a lot of wiggle room. We don't have a large fund balance. And we are adding some more.
Do you have a, do you have a product, Commissioner, with the fifty thousand, or?
I don't have a problem, but you.
No, right, no, I understand.
We're increasing to fifty thousand. I mean, we're doubling.
Both only for Priscilla, two.
Yeah, next year, we'll adjust, Nicola, I don't know.
You want to go in, in order of precinct commissioner, or?
I think she's, I think the commissioner is desperate. I think she has the worst road right now.
Yes, I do. I mean, and I can show you all pictures that they send me throughout the years where they're getting stuck.
But we'll try to isolate and work on each precinct all year.
No, I don't mind, Commissioner, I don't mind being a team parent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One one thing, now that we're on roads that I I didn't, uh, I identify and and need for, and this would be under Martin's, uh, the, and Martin Riz?
Fifteen Riz?
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. I was speaking to Mister Sines, uh, we, just driving the precinct to town, there's a lot of uh street signs that that are that are missing. Uh, and we're only allocating in the budget, and I think Mister Sines has the machine to.
Yes, sir.
Are you ordering the sign, Mister, sign?
Uh, as as soon as the budget.
Both, oh, so we, I I allocate these two thousand dollars, that's what Mister Sines asked for, but I think the need is much greater.
Yeah.
If you drive truck, so I'd like to get that to to ten thousand dollars for street signs, twenty-five hundred for precinct, and see how much we can uh address the.
They're expensive.
I know, that's why, with two thousand dollars, we're not gonna do much.
I don't know.
So, we're, so let's start with twenty-five hundred for precinct, and and see how many streets we can address, and and then work on it on a yearly basis, but I know they're very expensive, they're probably ten to twenty dollars each, uh, so I understand.
Uh, Mister Sines, would you mind approaching the the police precinct? Since we're on, uh, his department. Just, just a quick question, just uh for the public's information, how many employees do we have that are dedicated to animal control?
Animal control is, uh, Victor, uh, just two.
Two.
Only two.
Does that include you, or?
No, I, three, three with him.
Okay, because, I mean, as you know, we get a lot of complaints about stray dogs, I mean, I think it's a big problem in our community. Uh, we have a lot of people who, you know, like to walk, jog, ride their bikes, et cetera, and, you know, I mean, that's probably one of the number one complaints I get, is is that there's just too many stray dogs out there.
Yes, sir.
Um, so do you feel it would benefit from additional help? I know we've asked you this question in the past.
Uh, um, uh, well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to you all, I mean.
Well, no, I'm asking you, I mean, you run the department, so I'm gonna be.
Yes, sir.
So, what, I mean, what, basically, how does it, how does it work right now, when you get a complaint for, uh, let's say stray dogs in a certain area, or what is the procedure that you follow?
Well, the procedure is that, uh, uh, we try to catch, I mean, it's hard, but I mean, if 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 we can go ahead and uh and uh and set some traps in that area, I guess.
Is 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 there like a, I guess, special or specific training that that you all have to undergo, you know, to be able to do that? I'm asking because my guys have told me, my crew have told me, we can catch dogs if we can.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's just, it's just a lot of times, I mean, you guys are spread thin, I mean, trying to control the whole county, you know, for two people is, is not happening.
Yeah, because it's a massive, a cornucopia, Medina and.
Yeah, it's possible, they could coordinate, yeah.
I I mean, we're willing to do it, I just, I wasn't sure if they're requiring a type of specific, or specialized.
No, that would be something good, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just, I mean.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I did, you know, on that subject, uh, and I'm glad you are, that Commissioner, the, Commissioner, uh, from Heaven Hill, his name, uh, some other reason.
Yes.
Called me over the weekend, uh, he, uh, they had a program there with a visiting vet, uh, they're gonna break these vaccines. And so he'll be coming to Sabata to, I did speak with with the the veterinarian there, and to see if we could establish a program here in uh in Sabata for spade and muttering, uh, with the county sponsoring, and see how much other cost, uh, would, you know, uh, you know, initial level would be, and and try to help the public in that respect, and so, they'll be getting back with me, I I I was, you know, been including my proposed budget, but it's something that we can fund, if it's possible during the year to to, if we can get a program with with uh some veterinarians coming in our community to to offer that, and and see how much the county can sponsor, and we can sponsor the the legalities of that, but I think it's something to to look into.
Yeah, sure, I mean.
Yeah.
No problem.
So maybe we can coordinate, once your starts, uh, and and I'll get, you know, coordinate with you and your guys, and see, give us a little bit of training, maybe how to shoot those guards or something?
Yeah, sure, no, no problem, I mean, if you all wanna help me, that's, yeah.
I mean, we're here to work together, right, so, just wanna make sure, because we get that complaint a lot, so we need to do something about it before, and I know there's already been people who have been bitten, uh, by some stray dogs, so before another tragedy happens, I think we need to address the situation.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mister Sines, appreciate it.
Any other questions, would you, Sheriff?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Sheriff, how are you, Mr.?
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Here's the, there's the Commissioner, this is the Sheriff, I I got a chance to read this morning, Sheriff, your uh, your letter, uh, to myself, and I think that I think that first sentence is, uh, I try to take exception to that, that proposing the Sabata County Sheriff's Office take the reduction in salaries and budget cuts, that that's totally misinformation, I, there are no proposed budget cuts in salaries at all in your department.
Well, because you agreed that you were gonna give my detention officers a rate when we were behind.
I said, if possible, uh, I would.
I would consider it possible, because even last year, sir, you said it, give me a chance, let me work with the deputies, and then.
Yeah, but there are no, there are no budget, there are no salary cuts. Now, did I include a raise? I explained my position on why I didn't include any raises, I mean, the only one that got a raise was you, Sheriff.
No, I actually got a five thousand dollar cut from sixty-five thousand.
Because you were using a county vehicle, Sheriff?
I'm using a county vehicle?
And you're using a car allowance, and a car allowance.
I'm using a patrol vehicle, 'cause as a, as a deputy.
Well, then, I I don't wanna avoid any confusion to the public, you should not.
It's not, it's not a confusion, sir, well, are you gonna pay for my family's welfare if they get shot in my personal drug?
And I'm not gonna do that, Sheriff, this is, these are technically.
Why don't you tell this twenty-four seven, Judge?
You you asked for a car allowance, but they're granting your car allowance, so you're supposed to, a car allowance means you're using your vehicle.
I don't wanna disrespect you or the court.
Well, you're not, you're having a discussion, but.
Well, then, I'm I'm, let me get to what I wanna say, and then you can.
Okay. Sheriff.
You can address my staff.
But that statement is wrong, there are no salary cuts, and I want you to admit that.
No, it is, it's not.
Well, it's wrong, 'cause there are, if you're taking a look at their pay stubs, it'll be the same. There are no salary cuts.
Working as a law enforcement officer, detention officer, can be satisfying, satisfying, rewarding, saddening, and lonely, and fulfilling, all in the same shift. Always remember that the day in the life of a law enforcement officer and a detention officer is never finished. Though the day has been packed with drama and potentially the loss of your own life, things must continue. As a law enforcement officer and a detention officer, we have many duties daily, protecting the life of citizens, property, enforcement of the laws, patrol, assigned areas, responding to calls for service, and testifying in court when necessary. Conducting preliminary follow-up investigations and interviews, arresting people, processing suspects, criminals, operating a law enforcement vehicle, and all duties that our law enforcement officers are trained. Our first step in recruiting and keeping these great men and women in law enforcement is to offer them a good living wage, and with, in turn, they can provide for their families. The issue of a fair and reasonable salary for all officers and detention employees are brass, detention officers, dispatchers, administrative assistants, and myself is obvious. This is a crisis, and we watch more and more law enforcement officers, detention officers, and first responders from the fire department leave Sabata for higher paying state and federal jobs, even to the surrounding counties, which offer a higher wage and better pay scale than Sabata County. I'm just asking you to be reasonable.
I understand, Sheriff, but you don't have the money, you think money grows on trees, or what, Sheriff?
No, sir, but it is growing with the county jails, it is growing with the county jail.
Basically, the jails now are paying for their own weight, uh, Sheriff, for many years, the county was subsidizing the operation of those jails to a tune of over a million dollars, so if we finish paying them off, now basically, they're operating, which is good, they're operating on their own. We're not having to subsidize, but is it a cash cow, is it providing huge amounts of revenue to the county as as profit? No. You have, you're, I'm proposing that you bring in two point four million dollars, which is, uh, I think, a reach, but I hope you can achieve that. But at the same time, you're spending, uh, let's go to the jails, one point, uh, eight on, to administer that jail, one point eight million, and then you have on the county jail, seven hundred thousand, so basically, one point eight and seven hundred is two point five. Now, we can argue that, yes, but we're housing our current, uh, uh, local inmates, which is fine, I don't have a problem with that, Sheriff, but don't bring it as that you're bringing in revenue, so the county can can have all this money to spend, we're basically paying for the operation of those jails.
No, no, I'm not saying to spend, no, I'm not saying to spend, I'm saying, I'm I'm saying to help my deputies and retain my deputies.
And we did, and if if anybody's, uh, you know, backed up your deputies, it's my, it's been my administration.
Because it was a political year, and you were not political.
I I raised, uh, two years in a row.
Sir, I was there within your office, Judge, was there, and you like to.
I said, let me look, let me look at the numbers.
I went to them. Like to them.
Exactly, I said, let me look at the final numbers.
Like to them, because you said, you said, let me take away your car allowance, so I can give a raise to your guys.
No, I said, let me take away your car allowance, so you won't have to, you can use a county vehicle.
Because?
Because you're not supposed to do both.
Be, okay.
Is is that correct?
Uh, show me the law where that is correct.
Okay, I will, I'll show you that, okay.
And I can show you that, uh, the the sheriff can use any vehicle in his fleet at any time, Sheriff.
Well, my understanding of power allowance is you're gonna use your own vehicle to to transport yourself, uh, from place to place. And the British Sheriff.
But no, look, I don't wanna disrespect.
Well, that may not be disrespectful, we're having, we're having a a, you know, a conversation.
No, no, no. Yeah, but you tend to, you tend to push people around in the court, you're not gonna push me around.
Who's not pushing you around?
Because we 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 talked in your office.
I talked, and and I.
And keep your word, keep your word, sir.
Well, I I tried to see.
Just keep your word, that's what I'm asking.
It was the initial budget request.
Keep your word, 'cause who do you call when you need help, sir? Be responsive.
Oh, no, Sheriff, don't don't play that card, Sheriff, okay, that's that's your duty, all right?
Yes, and it's your duty to help retain all the.
And many have, and I have over the years, the problem is, we got a one point five hundred dollar budget shortfall.
Sir, you took away five hundred and twenty-nine thousand of a certificate of obligation for the unit, I helped you out, the governor helped you out, cover that. Our vest, there's no way to find my vest, we have a good purchase vest for my guy.
Sheriff, I, but you listen to my comment and statement, the 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 state puts caps on how much revenue we can raise. Our IMS is our IMS, M and O, we can only raise half a million dollars from year to year, and that's what we did.
In other counties, the the county judge and the sheriff are the main people that have the county survive and push forward. Here, we're pushing in different directions.
Well, that's your, that's your opinion, I.
Because we tend to do stuff that will benefit you, sir, and not to benefit the county.
So maybe this county's salary, yes.
The Star County Sheriff, his salary is a hundred thousand, the Jager's thirty thousand, the sheriff in West County's one twenty-five, the Jager's forty-six thousand.
You're going back to comparing, you're kept comparing apples to oranges.
We're we're, we're border sheriffs, we're border deputies.
Look at the size of the population, the size of their budgets, uh, uh, Sheriff, we're a small rural county, we're living in a resource.
Isn't that your job to help us come up front with the budgets?
We can't squeeze money, money out of the people here, we don't have it.
No, but we're, we're, and and try to find help for these people.
We, as as far as grants?
Yes.
We we have more than ten or twelve million dollars in grants coming down.
You, you, that's making your trade concentrating a bunch of things, Judge, that doesn't even help the community.
The grants don't, don't help, the grants are not designed to fund your M and O, Sheriff, and you know that. You fund your M and O with the resources that the county has, and I think we've done very well with the limited tax revenues that we have, uh, with bringing, uh, our sales tax into play, we never had a sales tax, uh, we even have maquinitas to help you us, but it it's it's a reach. We, our tax base produces six million dollars, Sheriff, your bu- your department is six million dollars. Where do you think we're, we're gonna get the money? We're in a hole, one point five million dollars.
And why is that, Judge? Why are we?
Because we're overspending, we've had, we don't, we used to have, Sheriff, we had two and a half billion dollars in in values fifteen years ago, in minerals. Guess what we have now? Three hundred million, so we went from having twenty-five million dollars of revenue on a yearly basis to three.
Judge, if you go back.
So we have to adjust.
If you go back on every Commissioner's court, every budget hearing, it's the same thing with you.
Well, we don't have any money, Sheriff, it's my, it's my job to make sure that.
Why don't you sit together with your fellow, uh, Commissioners, and let's do something to help?
It's my job to make sure that this county doesn't go broke.
It is broke, you're just owe me.
We've got money in the bank, because I have to fight for it.
Only you? What about these people next to you? What about all of us? I'm against your budget, what you're proposing.
By the way, the sheriff is not happy with sixty thousand, he wants seventy-five thousand.
Yes, and they can vote on it if you want, last time I left it on the table for you to give me the sixty-five, you denied it, and I signed off on it.
I'm just, I just told you, you'll be driving a county vehicle now all the time, I guess.
It's okay, it's okay, you can write with me, say you go to calls if you want.
No, I'm good, I'm glad we won't have the, the idea of having a, a.
And I wanted you to make this, dignified, sir, but you can never work with me.
Well, that, your your opening statement, Sheriff, was not dignified.
Well, that's the truth.
Because it's a lot.
That's the truth, I want you.
There are no salary reductions.
Sir, I want you to tell the detention officers and my staff, they're not worth anything.
They're worth, they're paying, they're worth even more, I wish I could pay them more, but we can't, 'cause that, we have.
Yes, you can, sir, yes, you can, you can, but you don't.
Oh, we can, and we can have a, and then in a few years, the whole county can go broke, and we won't even have any services.
The whole county's not gonna go broke, sir, you know that, we got windmills, remember?
We got windmills, yeah. Moving on, okay, the sheriff, uh, his requests are he wants his salary, uh, to go up to seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, then, uh, well, he's got to hold this, so he's requesting, uh, paying precincts for his entire staff. So we'll consider those, as we look forward, anybody else? Anybody else? Well, then we'll have a recess for September the twelfth.
Thank you.
Would you have motion to recess, or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to recess for September the twelfth.